Morning, it's 10 a.m. I ask you to please rise if you're able for the opening of our flag, please, Mr. Commissioner's Public Meeting. Apparently, Father, we gather today to conduct matters of business for our county. We pray for your wisdom as we make decisions that may be successful in accordance with your will. Father, this morning, we pray for the victims of the recent flood in our area. We thank you. There was no loss of life or serious injuries. Pray that you'll comfort and restore to those that suffered horrific loss. We thank you for those who have given so graciously and showed your love and assistance to those that are suffering. In the days ahead, may they have hope to know they were not alone. We're thankful that we live in communities that help each other and show your love daily. He says we pray and humbly ask in your name. Amen.
Flag, please, to the fire of the United States of America. And as to their loyalty for which states, one nation, under God, indivisible, will deliver pure justice for all.
We at this time convene our commissioners' public meeting and ask for approval of that in the previous meeting.
I will make a motion.
A second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Any public comment or agenda items only at this time? Time for the audience to move on. Service Awards. Krista.
Krista, do you want me to speak?
You speak first.
We're recognizing Lori Weston today for her 20-year pin. Lori came to work for Lycoming County on August 16th, 2004. She's always been in the fiscal, financial world of the county. Over the past 20 years, she's held five positions, starting as a clerk one, moving to a clerk two, clerk three, fiscal technician, and now is the lead payroll AP specialist. She holds the most knowledge about accounts payable and payroll and was trained by the OGs, for those who remember, Donna and Ori Brown and Peg Raymond. Lori has weathered many storms, both personally and professionally, in her time with the county. However, she has managed to keep her sense of humor and her willingness to change, learn, and always look to help and grow with the ever-changing landscape of county government. I'm grateful to be standing here as her current supervisor and friend, and able to celebrate her health and longevity here and now as one of my employees. I look forward to the growth we will have together as we move forward, and I'm thankful for all that Lori has given and continues to give to the employees and citizens of Lycoming County. Thank you for being you, Lori.
Thank you. Was it in your staff like to say anything about?
Now they're flying.
Lori, do you want to say anything about them?
Lori, would you like to come up, please?
Me?
Yes. So, thank you. Twenty years is a long time.
Yes.
It's a generation. And for you to be here and every day, performing duties that you've had, you've had five different roles. We expect you to stick around there 20 years and have five more.
Where am I going? Do I get one of your positions?
You might. But you've been through a lot of transition, and you've always kept an upbeat attitude, and you're actually working with different changes. And we want to thank you. Done great work. We appreciate all you've done.
Thank you.
Mr. Commissioner? Yep. So, I don't know where to start with you, Lori, but I'll start with the great side of it, that, you know, 20 years at one place, you know, today's world, we don't see that out of many people. So, thank you so much for the time you've spent with the county. Obviously, you've also been in some wild transition areas, being on the financial side. So, thank you for sticking through all that, keeping the positive outlook, and now having a great new opportunity within the Controller's Office. So, it's great that you've been able to do that, too. And it took us about a month, but you finally started just calling me back. So, that's, that's a positive. And it was a big struggle for you, so I appreciate it.
That's what I was gonna say. I hope we get to the point that you can just call me Mark, because she always calls me Commissioner.
Yes.
Well, if you call him Mark, you can call me Mark.
Okay.
I'm just happy.
You told me I could.
I've only known you for seven months, but you're always smiling. You're always happy. Maybe it's because I see you in the hallway, and you got away from these people. That makes you happy. But.
She's heading for a cigarette.
Or she's shaking, and then she's happy on her way back. I don't know. But it's just always pleasant to, you know, to see you in the hallway, because you're always smiling. And it'll be more pleasant now when you just call me Mark. We thank you. Just thank you for the attitude. And I can't imagine that, even when I do walk by your office, you're always pleasant. And no matter where we are, no matter what department we're in, having coworkers like that just makes the day better, the job better. So, we thank you for that, too.
Okay, thank you.
Responsibility with payroll is huge.
I love doing payroll.
Yep, yep.
It helps.
Big reason why people get paid, because you have to make sure it's accurate. Thank you. We have a pin and a certificate we'd like to present to you. Get a picture. Is that okay? Great, thank you. Oh, your family's here.
Yes, that's my granddaughter, and her husband, Taylor. That's Rachel. Taylor, you heard. My great-granddaughter, that's Lady Grace, my great-grandson.
Thank you for being here.
Welcome to the grounds.
Yeah, absolutely.
Did you guys, we're good. Oh, okay.
How you doing? If you want your family.
I almost nodded over.
Okay, moving on then. Reports, Krista. Hey, are they all going back to work?
That's right. You don't get to say that. 16, 20, not 16. I couldn't resist.
Okay. Presented for your ratification are invoices due through August 21st, 2024, to be paid on August 14th, 2024, in the amount of $1,633,662.07. The breakdown is as follows: From the general fund, $462,118.75 for a percentage of 28.29. From other grants, $986,482.62 for a percentage of 60.38. From RMS, $129,352.36 for a percentage of 7.92. From escrow, $55,708.34 for a percentage of 3.41.
Do I have motions?
I'll make a motion.
A second. Is there any comments or questions? All fair side?
Aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Would it be all right if we put salary board ahead of this stuff?
At this time, we'll recess the commission's public meeting for salary board.
Vote to approve the August 1st, 2024 salary board minutes?
I will make a motion.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
And we have an action for an item that we added to the TDA on August 1st. It's a non-union position, a temporary position for a part-time ADA. This is to clean up, we had added a contract position to bring back a retiree to assist the DA, but we cannot do that for IRS regulations. So, we are adding a part-time position at the same contract rate. So, we're putting it on payroll as a part-time position at $100 an hour, up to $20,000 less what we paid under the contract.
And that will be listed on the informational items on the agenda. Correct?
Well, he's going to have a personnel action to move the person into it, but we wanted to get this corrected with the dollar figure.
That's the position we're talking about.
Yeah, it is. Yep.
I have motion.
I'll make a motion.
A second. All fair side?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll adjourn the salary board, and we will convene the commissioners' public meeting and move on to informational items. Maya? Thank you, Krista.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
So, the first item I wanted to address was that we would be reopening the request for bids for landfill gas well drilling at RMS.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning.
Following up on the, on the elected official personnel action that you just presented, District Attorney's Office, Ken Oscar Cow, Assistant District Attorney, temporary, part-time, that is $100 per hour, not to exceed the contractual amount of $20,000 total, less what has already been currently paid out to the individual.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Personnel actions. I'm going.
Approve the following personnel actions as conditional offers of employment, subject to the successful completion of a background check and all other employment conditions outlined here in attachment A. In the tax assessment office, Katie Sambsel, clerk four, excuse me, pay grade five, full-time, $17.482.5 cents per hour, 75 hours per pay period, anticipated transfer date, August 18th, 2024. In the prison, Rachel Fox, licensed practical nurse, pay grade 10, part-time, $30 per hour, not to exceed 1,000 hours annually. This is the anticipated start date, August 20th, 2024. Also in the prison, Nathan Spicer, correctional officer, union position, full-time, $20 per hour, 80 hours per pay period, anticipated start date, August 26th, 2024. Resource management, Emery Byerly, recycling laborer, pay grade four, full-time, $14.50 per hour, 80 hours per pay period, anticipated start date, August 26th, 2024. Resource management, Jason Fox, recycling laborer, pay grade four, full-time, $14.50 cents per hour, 80 hours per pay period, with an anticipated start date, September 3rd, 2024. And wrapping up, adult probation office, Sarah Johns, evidence-based practice coordinator, pay grade nine, $31.2012.75 cents per hour, full-time position, 80 hours per pay period, anticipated start date, August 18th, 2024.
Hey, do I have a motion to accept the personnel actions?
I will make a motion.
Second. Any questions or comments? All fair side?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Action orders. Number one, Shannon. For Shannon, for permit fee.
Good morning, commissioners. With all of the damage that some of the residents and businesses have had with Hurricane Debbie and tropical storm Debbie, David Hepburn, our zoning administrator, has been receiving a lot of calls about what do I do, what kind of permits do I need? Because the county has a zoning partnership ordinance, which covers 19 municipalities, and quite a few of them are in these rural areas that have seen a lot of issues with their residences or businesses. So, we thought it appropriate that for a period of 90 days, that we would not waive the permit, but waive the fee for the permit. So, he's been working diligently with a lot of individuals and a lot of questions. So, he will be getting these development permits for, not sorry, rebuilding, but fixing some of the issues. Some of them may require some additional brackets or I controls, depending on whether they're out in a floodplain or, and such. So, with this, we wanted to pass the resolution that would waive those fees for 90 days and give them at least additional help with the situation that's occurring. And we will also are working very diligently with DPS and Emergency Management Agency to make sure that this information gets out there. But it'll be for a period of 90 days, starting from August 9. And then David will review all the permanent applications. If they qualify, they'll will.
Yeah, motion?
I'll make a motion.
A second. All been, all three of us have been up there toward the damage, and this is one way we can assist.
There's, we've had calls from many, many individuals. Some of them are in our area, in our partnership zoning ordinance, and those that are not, we're referring them to the proper entity that can help them. Their DPS is in the process of setting up a mark, which is a multi-agency resource center. That's going to be Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday of next week at the Hepburn Fire Company. And that's going to have a lot of, I believe, PMA will be there, and other entities will also be there. Our flood coordinator will be there, just to anybody who wants to come in, talk to them. I believe, John, it's going to be 12 to 8. But check out, check out the emergency management website for that notification. But we'll be there. We'll assist anybody we can. You know, it's really hard for, it's good for us, because we have people in the office, but it's really hard for some individuals to get a hold of their individual municipalities, because most of them are out there doing site assessments and trying to get people to be able to access. And so, it's hard for people to talk to somebody at some of the municipalities. So, even though we don't follow their regulations, we're trying to help them, point them in the right direction, where to go. And, you know, the key thing is, is get their information, because we need to make sure, you know, that EMA has all that information for when they fill their paperwork out for the state, hopefully state or federal backlogs.
We were up there reassuring the public that the county would be there to help, assist.
And we've had calls from, you know, the most visible damage is trout run, but we've had calls from a number of individuals up English Center, up Little Pine Creek, Anthony Township, you know, Salabaseburg, Washington Township.
Woodward Township.
You know, it's all over, and it was such a unique storm that, you know, you could have this little watershed here, no damage. This little watershed across the street, lots of damage. So, we're receiving calls from all over, and we're trying to refer them to the appropriate entity.
Okay, thank you. And thank you to planning. Thank you to EMS, DPS, everybody on the county end that's been there, who will continue to be there for these incidents.
And the key thing is, you know, make sure you report the damage. That's a key thing. I know we have, we're, one of our transportation planners is out with DPS this morning out in Washington Township to document all their, so that's the key thing. If we don't know about it, we can't document it, and we can't be, those funding levels to document that. So, that's a really key thing.
We want to thank Jo Ham, our Sheriff's Department, Sheriff, Senator Yaw's office, Representative Flick, they've all been up to assess damage. They're working with the state officials, the governor's office on that level, all the different, and everybody's letting them know to be here, be at the table to help these residents.
Yeah. And we might not think we're lucky, but we're lucky when you look at Iowa County, lots of those things that have happened up there. So.
Yeah, Westfield got hit really bad.
Yeah, yeah. That was, that was.
Thank you. Okay.
Commissioner, can I just make a comment or plug for anybody that would be watching? If you have damage reports and you have not coordinated with your local municipal township, borough, emergency manager, by all means, go to lyco.org. There'll be a link on there to go to the emergency management. And DPS, make your report through that. That way, we can log it. We'll get back with the local EMC to coordinate the.
Thank you. Thank you to Director for taking the calls and coordinating the different agencies also. You know, I've been there several times also, assessing the damage. Share your efforts. Okay, well, we have motion, a second. All fair side?
Aye.
Okay, Mike?
Go ahead.
Yep.
Okay. All right, I have several items, so 7.2 through 7.6. I'll start with 7.2. Vote to ratify the engagement letter with Baker Tilly. This is in regards to 2023 audit. We went ahead and obviously approved it already for the sake of expediting the process. As you all know, where we're at financially, we're a little behind, so we're trying to keep things moving as we keep gaining momentum and getting across the finish line.
Thank you.
Yep.
Can I make a motion?
A second.
All fair side?
Aye.
The next item I have for you is vote to award bid for the Corners bill to the following bidders. So, we had multiple bidders, and the lowest ones are selected. Now, I will tell you, there was some errors with regards to submitting proper documentation with the bid process. I did discuss with the solicitor to see if he was in agreement to determine whether if we would allow for a reasonable amount of time for them to upload those documents into our pending bid program. And he was in agreement with that. So, as soon as those documents come to us, there'll be full compliance, and then we can report as needed.
We do these individually?
Sure.
Okay.
Yep. So, the first one would be vote to award bid for the Corners project to keep construction connection.
Yeah, motion?
I'll make a motion.
A second. All fair side?
Aye.
And just as an FYI, they would be the main bidder for the construction side of things. There wasn't one section under the general prime contractor is going to let you know that we did not accept, and that was just the frame install access panels. We can get it somewhere else from another vendor at a cheaper cost. And the next one then would be vote to award Wayne's Board Electric.
Motion?
I'll make a motion.
A second. All fair side?
Aye.
The next one would be Dixon ACR Corporation.
I have motion. I'll make the motion. A second. Question for solicitor. Southit Coffee contributed my campaign, but I'm not benefiting any such way from this. Should abstain?
If the other two are able to vote on this, then I would advise you to.
Okay, abstain. Okay, so that's two, and abstention. All right, next.
The next item would be Silver Tip Incorporated.
Yeah, motion?
I'll make the motion.
A second. All fair side?
Aye.
And the last bidder would be Icon Fire Solutions.
Motion?
I'll make a motion.
A second. All fair side?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The next item, 7.4, vote to.
Hang on one second.
Oh, sorry.
Great news, Chuck.
It is great news.
Do you like to make any comments? Could you please stand up? We have a camera that circles around, which is so that people see you.
Just, thank you. Shannon, all of us, we're getting this process, so we're over that hurdle, and hopefully that's.
Yep, step closer.
Play at the end of the tunnel.
Yeah.
Thank you, Reverend.
Okay, thank you.
And commissioners, I'd just like to note that, and I'll upset Chuck at you included on the emails, but not necessarily commissioners. So, the next phase, what I would like to see is a better cost schedule and project schedule timeline with Skanska, who's the construction management team involved with the project. Once we have that, we'll have a better projection on our budget perspective on how much it's going to cost this year and the next year, so we have a better form of plan.
It's always good to hear a quarter say they're late at the end of the tunnel.
Yeah, yes. They don't see that too often.
I was gonna say, I just think this is a good example of how quickly government can work. Chuck just said like a couple months ago, you need a new building, didn't he? Wasn't it like April?
Thank you. Okay, Maya, thank you.
Next item, 7.4, vote to prove agreement with PA Emergency Management Agency for the fiscal year 2023 State and Local Cyber Security Grant Program. This is a program that we submit for through our IT program. It helps with our sensors that we have, our Albert sensors. We're always eligible to get reimbursed for those. So, that's something we started doing.
Okay, great. Motion?
I'll make a motion.
All fair side?
Aye.
The next item is vote to reject bids for the landfill gas drilling. As you saw, it's an information item. We put that project out to rebid. We're actually rejecting the bids that we received. There was only one from R&amp;L Development, and that's just due to there was an error in the bid process specifically with illegal ad not being done, violating compliance with code.
Motion?
I'll make a motion.
A second. All fair side?
Aye.
And then the last item I have for you is vote to approve grant award from Pennsylvania Commission on Primate Delinquency. It's for the intermediate punishment treatment program. It's in the amount of $380,000. This is a consistent grant award that we get through the courts and helps pay for, I think, well, it's not sure if they have someone now that they're replacing, but for the treatment court side of things.
Yeah, I think ones.
Yes.
As it stays day at 380,000.
We've been very lucky for the past three years. It's been consistent for us. And we were actually just talking Genai not too long ago, whether we anticipate any cut for the next year, and it looks pretty positive. So, hopefully that's it.
That's good news.
Yes, that's the trend.
Motion?
I'll make the motion.
A second. All fair side?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Nancy, you're up.
Good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
Good morning. To 7.7, I'm asking for your approval for our available rehabilitation center slash male town, the travel western education rehab and independent living.
Yeah, motion?
I'll make a motion.
A second. All fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
7.4, any ready for your approval for Curtis House and its residential treatment facilities in addition to collection of programs? Typically, we send girls there, so there's a male and female for involved, though.
Is that the Wintzeniri?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Nancy, is that, is that a common, I mean, these increases seem huge. We have 55%, 67%, 23, 39%? Is that just where this, this industry is going with these programs?
Pardon?
That's just kind of where the industry is going with these programs?
Yeah, and I think Travis and Brad, I don't think we had a contract with them last year, so we're recording two years worth of. Yeah, and I think Travis and Brad, I don't think we had a contract with them last year, so we're recording two years worth of. And patient.
Do we have anybody out there anticipated to go there?
No, we don't have anybody in any of the three that I'm presenting.
Okay. Okay. Motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll say. All fair side. And third.
And seven point nine is your rest of your approval for community united network. That's a Muncie. That's fees for foster care, mainly foster care.
Those increases are anywhere from six to eight percent, and we have some decreases. So we appreciate that. That's good news, and it's a Muncie, so it's close. Okay, good. I have motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll say. All fair side. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Have a good day.
You too.
These two purchases that I'm asking the Commissioners to approve are are things where we are helping to support of the Conservation District through the American Rescue Plan Act funds. So these are, these are things that we're purchasing through ARPA that will be transferred out.
It'll be on the agricultural.
Yep.
Side of the budget that we put in the ARPA.
Yep, this is the first two, I guess, actions out of at least four or five that you're going to see over the next couple of months. And these are just easiest ones to get out of the way at first.
Good.
Don't know what uh order they are, but I'll go with the cattle chute first. I'm asking the Commissioners to approve the purchase of the air equipped cattle chute from Rutledge Repair. It's a total of nineteen thousand nine hundred fifty dollars. We were able to save a couple of dollars because it's last year's model, so we got a discount compared to what same model is basically this year.
Okay, can you kind of explain what they do?
I'll try. So a cattle chute basically is, this is mobile, you can, it's trailered, so it can go to farmers throughout the county. And we'll have a leasing or rental program for it that we need to set up still, but essentially as you process your livestock with various treatments, vaccinations, uh other things. They they need to have that tracked and they track it through a Q R code on an ear tag, I believe. So it's kind of dangerous to do if you don't have the proper equipment to do it, and there are some new rules, regulations that have. If you don't do this, it negatively impacts the price per pound of livestock. So the ag committee has put this idea forward to basically have a cattle chute where you load the cow on. It keeps the cow in place and then you can kind of process through the Q R code or tag. So this will be out, you know, at the county farm. We're working out the logistics there still, so there will be more detailed announcement when it's available for rent. But that's by layman's terms.
So mobile veterinarian doctor's office on wheels.
Yep.
Where the cow stays stationary so they can be vaccinated and tagged.
Yeah, but it and it's a dramatic price per pound difference.
Well, the the key part of it is that certain types of cattle will have. That's one of the new state regulations. So putting, obviously putting in an ear tag is not something that cattle want you to do. So the containment unit will help keep the cattle stationary and allow it to happen as the farmer will not get injured hopefully during that process. The other benefit is that the inoculation, because it's hard to give cattle inoculation. So you'll do this at the same time you're doing the tags. And that's where the price difference at the market is. If they could show the inoculations that have been given, the price per pound for the heat. I think I think that same was thirty four percent, thirty forty cents higher per pound. Which when you think about how's the power fee plus significant increase in your in your bottom line. So it'll help a lot, especially with the smaller farmers, you know, if you're on a large farm, you probably have it. But a small farm's own desk. So this will be a really, a really big help for them. They'll be able to pick it up, trailer it to their place, bring it back. There'll be requirements for sanitation. Bring it back clean. It'll get sanitized by whoever at at the farm. It's going to be handled now. So we're making sure that it's it's all all in good condition when it's being.
Okay, good.
And the second item.
One second. I'll say a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll say. Any questions or comments?
I didn't, my only comment was I think the number he gave was different than the number we have. Didn't you say nineteen?
Yeah, it is lower now, I believe. So one of the committee persons. Beth Baylor. Beth Miller. Beth Miller. Went back out to to get an updated invoice. They dropped off some accessory. Pieces, fencing and different types of collars for the unit. They're going to stick with the the basic unit at this point to see if and then see if they need anything in addition. We have more than enough money in this line item within their budget to to purchase those smaller items later if if needed.
So what was your number, nineteen thousand?
It's nineteen thousand nine hundred and fifty. I forgot to mention. No, you said.
You said it, and as we were reading.
Sorry.
Okay, no, thanks.
We have motion. We have a second. All fair side. Seven point eleven.
And and this is also to support the Conservation District and and the ag community within LeComan County. This is the purchase of thirty virtual reality units, headsets, a GoPro camera, a tripod. And I think that's that's it for for here. The total purchase price here is fourteen thousand nine hundred nineteen dollars and ninety eight cents. I T is has been a real big help in in kind of looking for this equipment and the best price. We originally budgeted, you know, a ballpark of twenty three thousand dollars. So so they've done a great job in helping us find some savings. Money that could be applied elsewhere with the ag. And then this, this is just, so we have a few uh levels of of public education here. This is going to be for, you know, I guess teens, young adults, adults. To to basically expose them to the agricultural industries that we have available in LeComan County, and it'll be used for a lot of public education.
Be great for schools, virtual headsets. So actually reality.
Bring them right into the as the milking parlor, as as Matt Long mentions, and and all the other functions of of a farm.
Excited for you.
Yeah, yeah, it's really cool. And and we're working on a thing for for the younger segment of of the school age population as well. We'll bring that forward.
Okay, motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll say. Any comments, questions? Bringing in all fair side. Okay, thank you, John.
Thank you.
Jason.
Commissioners, I'd like to start out before presenting, I apologize to you and Commissioner Director McGurman, Solicitor Wiley and mine attuned. It was on my failure to get the newspaper ad out that we had to redo the drilling, well drilling. So there's a lot of work and effort to go into these bids. This bid was able to be just turned around and go back out, but still, I appreciate Solicitor Wiley working with me. And once I noted, realized I'd made a failure to get the newspaper ad out, I notified all channels, apologized, but took ownership of it. So sorry about that. Commissioners, for approval, seven point one two. Purchase the odor control product from Croft Chemical Company in amount of twenty thousand seven hundred ninety four dollars and eighty cents. This is four drums of, we always joke about, it's really expensive for breeze. Like this is the chemicals that you will see in those white trailers stationed strategically out throughout RMS that puts out a mist and helps issue with issues with the heat that creates the odors of stuff at the landfill. We like the neighborhood and we like the residents and the folks on Route fifteen to go by and not know we're there.
Motion.
I'll make the motion.
Outside, all fair side.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Jason.
All right, seven point thirteen. Your approval on a update to the county's right to know policy. All the updates are highlighted, but major update. Way that questions are wired to be submitted. So the policy requires that the must be submitted through the county's right to know webpage. Build the option to submit a hard copy right to know request. Are limiting attachments. To come in on a right to know request. Basically from a cybersecurity perspective. Certain PDFs have been known to to come with malware.
Hey, is there a motion?
I'll make the motions.
I'll say. Any questions or comments for the Director? Bring in all fair side. Um, last week. I threw a chronological list of dates and times, we tried to meet with the registry reporter. And we had highlighted a meeting that we were going to file for injunction for relief the courts. After the meeting, we sat down and we decided at this time not to file that legal action. We have attempted to contact the registry reporter. As I highlighted the list last week, it is over forty times over the last twelve weeks, we have attempted to initiate contact either through email, in person or in writing. Uh and with solicitor's helps to try to get Mr. Huffman to come to the table. As of last week, he has still yet to contact us. Unfortunately. We decided it's best not to go through the courts for this, but we are going to proceed with the plan. Have a blueprint. Set of blueprints that has been examined by several people. Think it's a great plan. People have asked, why, why do you want to move the registry recorder's office? And the reason being is because it's part of the process. Make sure the court and the courthouse is a safer building. We're doing this for safety reasons and more efficiency throughout the building. Limiting the flow of of traffic with the courts between floors instead of several floors. Having holding cells next to each other instead of located on several floors. Which puts everybody at risk. The staff at risk, it puts the public at risk. So this is the first step in order to start that process. And again, we invite Mr. Huffman to come to the table and work with us. Has not happened yet. We hope that he has changed your heart. But we we're moving on with the process. We've we've met with people that use his office on a daily basis, customers. They have seen the blueprints. They've given us input, the public, and they like, they like. At one one person who had a few concerns, we answered those concerns. And they were satisfied. But the people that came and looked at the blueprints from the public think this is great to have a new facility. All one floor, A D A compliant. Actually, more square footage than what Mr. Huffman has asked for. So we again, we encourage him come to the table, work with us. It's been over about a hundred fifteen days so far. We need his cooperation. If he chooses not to, we're going to move on without it. We're just not going to go through the courts. I feel that we should justify that expense to taxpayers of tying itself to legal matters. When we have the authority according to the code move forward for the best of everybody. Commissioners, if you'd like to add anything or additional.
You said that well.
Yeah, you said, what I would add, because I think it just needs clarification, what we talked about an injunction last week, injunction was to try to protect the employees of that department as best we could. And we will continue to try to protect them, but you know, the legal rights of a elected official takes us out of the employee side of it, unfortunately. So that I would think that that was our main concern was employees' safety. Of keeping their job. As for the building, I mean, as as Commissioner Metzger said, the move itself is really just to get the flow of the courthouse in the right spot. Unfortunately, as we've said many times, courthouse is built in nineteen seventy two, I believe. Nineteen seventy. It's grown immensely with people and courtrooms. And we're just out of space. Unfortunately, at that point, somebody has to move out of that building. And talking with the courts, the least connected was the registrar and recorder. Is it still going to be a challenge? Absolutely. There's things that are going to go back and forth across the street all day long, probably. But, you know, when you get to a point that your building is full and we have space available across the street, it only makes sense.
Yeah, hey. A key to that is it's not, it seems like it's us versus the registrar and recorder's office, but there's so many, you know, adult probation's involved and and the sheriff's offices involved and the courts are involved, but we're just trying to make it better for everyone. And so it's not just, you know, people are going to be, some other departments were going to be displaced way worse and that this was the best. You know, it's unfortunate the way it's been, but I think we're we're happy that we're not, we're going to keep this out of courts. Because that wouldn't be good for anybody, and that would just cost taxpayer money. So we're just going to continue on and and I think when it's done, everyone's going to be happy. We just need to get it.
I think so.
And he has expressed to us he needs more room. He's expressed that to me for four years, four and a half years. And this is a way to put everything on one floor instead of two floors and giving him more room. It also frees up the basement for storage for their departments, especially the pathater's office. Uh because he needs, he needs to keep everything on site regarding his records. So it's it's critical for that office too. And the other departments, domestics and DA's office. So again, we we encourage him to come to the table. We want to hear from him. I will tell whether he joins us. Thank you. Anything else for you, gentlemen?
Yeah. Yeah, I I actually took notes this week because it was just crazy week. So I, you know, it's it's really been like a whirlwind week in LeComan County. We ended, you know, last week with some flash flooding that you know, did a lot of damage in several areas of the county. Some total devastation in some of the areas. Commissioner Metzger, you know, had in his prayer, you know, again, we do, we do wish that everybody keeps those communities in their prayers. These communities have been working very hard over these last five or six days to clean up their homes and businesses. It's amazing how clean some of the areas are already. Uh you know, and I'm really proud to be part of a community that I, there was so much outreach. And of course, today with social media, it makes it easier. But I saw so much outreach of, hey, if you need me, I'm available. Hey, where can I help? That's just awesome that we have that type of people living in our community that are willing to give back to their neighbors and friends and people they don't even know to help because of the devastation. So I just think that's awesome. Then we turned around and we had, we're the third county in the state to honor the Purple Heart Veterans as a Purple Heart County, as we've all three have said, we can't believe that we're we're only the third. That's like, why isn't everybody doing this? But it's it's such an honor to be a county that has done this. In today's environment, you know, we we forget that there were lives lost for us to live, the wonderful life that we get to live. And I think it's just because it's been so long. And although there's wars going on in other countries right now, I think we, you know, as as humans, we And although there's wars going on in other countries right now, I think we, you know, as as humans, we we forget the pain of of the past. And therefore, we we kind of forget what some of these people did for us. So I think it's a great remembrance and honor to. The the residents of Lycoming County that survived the war, but were wounded in the war. A lot of them didn't survive the war. Uh so I I again, I think that memorial is just such a great reminder, and then, but you know, lastly, we go from. You know, some misery of flooding, some excitement of of Purple Heart to the great excitement, you know, that we're known. You know, once a year for is welcoming the world into our little community here. It was great to see so many people out at the Grand Island Parade. It's wonderful to see the smiles. And the excitement of so many young people on the streets, either watching the players come through. Um coming from other towns, coming from other countries to watch these players come through, and then just the excitement of the players themselves. Um I it it's just exciting to be part of Lycoming County uh for these next two weeks of great games and a lot of fun for a lot of people, so. It's what, put that out there as a reminder. We live in a great world.
Yeah, I don't mean to repeat things, but that Mark said, but um in trout run and and the places that are affected. We're just so thankful for the the community leaders that that step up, um the volunteer firemen and the the people that live right there, the neighbors. Because there's lots of people that help, but there's the leadership that has kind of taken the bull by the horns that um that get things rolling. And and we're here to help, but those are the boots on the ground that really, really make a difference. Um I also wanted to uh mention fall sports are underway, practices are going for, you know, soccer and football and. Tennis a little bit, cross country, and so um as those kids get ready for their seasons, we want to wish them well. The bands have already been up and going. If you saw the Little League Parade, you always get to see a bunch of local bands. Um so uh to to think about those kids as as school is about to get here, fall sports are underway. And also, I want to read this, I was digging through my phone trying to find it, as as Mark mentioned with Little League. Um a a Facebook friend of mine posts this every year, and uh he just repeats it, and it says, the Little League World Series is here. For the next two weeks, our city becomes the main focus of the sports world. It is the dream of every single player, their family and fans to make it to Williamsport, Pennsylvania. How cool is that? Take pride in where you live, it's a special thing. Be careful and a little more patient in your travels this next week. There will be plenty of people that don't know our area. They are our guests. Let's help them out. We can all play a small role in making their experience an enjoyable one. And as Mark talked about how lucky we are, it is, I I don't, it wasn't that long ago until I realized this. Um most things, a lot of things in sports, like the Super Bowl rotates and the uh Final Four rotates. And we don't know where the World Series is gonna be yet this year, because you don't know who makes it. And it's the way, that way for hockey, and it's a way for this, for the NBA Finals. You don't know where it's going to be until you see who gets there. And um there are a few places that are like an annual pilgrimage, you know, the you got the Masters Golf Tournament, the Daytona five hundred. The US Open tennis tournament's always in Flushing Meadow, the College World Series is always in Omaha, Nebraska. There are about a half dozen of them, that there is an annual pilgrimage. And, you know, that we have one here, and even though it's just about a bunch of twelve year olds. For, we we fall in this perfect window where there's not, you know, football hasn't started yet, baseball is in the dog days and. And the Little League World Series is the center of ESPN for the next ten days. And it's year after year after year after year, and Yankee Stadium doesn't get that. And there's no NFL stadium that gets that, but we get that. And uh it is, we're used to it, it's kind of part of we're living here, but until you step back and realize how special it is. And um so when you, when when the restaurants are a little more crowded, um again, be patient. There will be people wandering around, there are cars that are driving around, you see porn plates, and you don't, they don't know where they're going. So it is just to be patient and be appreciative of what they bring. And also, for the businesses in South Williamsport, especially a lot of the restaurants, um they actually suffer during Little League. Because people feel like, oh, it's just the whole, it's a madhouse over there, I'm not going anywhere near it. So um these places that you support, especially, you know, across the river. Um now, maybe with with Grubhub and and things like that, it makes it easier. You can still order from there and not leave your house, but. Um don't forget about about the the businesses in South Side that you support, especially if you're a resident over there. Because they they do it. It's surprising to hear, but their their business sometimes is down during Little League. Because they're just, people are so afraid that everyone goes there, so nobody goes there. So uh keep those businesses in mind during this time as well.
So uh last week, I had the uh honor to do a proclamation for Purple Heart ceremony. Two commissioners had joined after their tour up the trout run. And uh one thing I noted that there's three populations that don't get thanked enough. To the the farmer who feeds us. The uh police officer, law enforcement, fire and EMT that protects us and keeps us safe. And lastly, the veteran, the active service members fought for our freedoms, protect us from arms way every day. And it's remembered, it's important to remember all three populations. We recognize the Purple Hearts recipients that day. There were several in the county that stood. The local veteran, uh Jess Hatcher, who fought in Vietnam, he collects uh Purple Heart memorabilia. He had a great display on site, uh had a uniform from a uniform uh gentleman that passed away at seventy five years of age. Had been wounded twice during World War Two. Had been wounded over Normandy, when he, when he uh saw the beach, he was wounded again. And he had both Purple Hearts there, and he had his uniform there. And uh that's history, that's someone's legacy. It's important that people see that, remember that. Talk to Jess about, let's try to get you into the schools, educate the kids, let them see your display. Let them show what what these people fought for and and how they were wounded in action. And uh came home, some dead, some did, and uh and have them remember this, because this is part of history. It's so important that our youth know what took place, and so we're gonna be working on that with Jess. Going forward. It was an honor to be there that day and recognize those uh those Purple Heart recipients. They mentioned Little League, I I have a great perspective for the past past fifteen years, I've been a team host over there. And uh what was really neat yesterday is we were standing in line uh for the uh opening day ceremonies. The different parents interacting with the kids, and one theme I continued to hear was that people are so nice around here. They're so generous, they're so kind, and that warmed my heart to hear that uh from the visitors. We are on display, we're on display for the world, and we tell the kids over there, there's a camera everywhere you're at over here. So be careful how you act, because you're you're a representative of your city, your town, your state, your country. And your family, and we emphasize that to the kids, and it's the same way with our community, we're on display for the world. And uh we wanna be uh kind and generous, and uh and to hear that feedback from the parents. Was very encouraging, so we're gonna thank the people of the community that go out of their way, uh aren't a little bit more patient. I have the uh the New York team this year, our coaches, it's been coaching for thirty two years.
Wow.
He's been his funeral director, he's sixty nine, got a great sense of humor, kind of reminds me a little bit of Tommy LaSorda. And uh he's got quite, quite the uh, he's got the great attitude. He says, I've been, I've been doing this for thirty two years, thirty two years, I've been trying to get to this place. And he goes, this is, this is Disney World for baseball, it's wonderful. He says, this kid's already been around twelve years trying to get here. I've been trying to get here for thirty two years, and uh he goes, it's a joy to be here, and he says, you tell the people in your community. That I'm I'm excited, I can't wait to join these two weeks with them, so. Look forward to having them all and all the guests, so.
So if you call Scott between three and five o'clock today, he's gonna be a little nervous, and he might not get to his phone.
Play today, so. But it's great, the Australian team has triplets. Uh which is neat, they have a coroner team, which is neat, and uh so there's there's, it's nice to see the different perspectives, different stories. Um you know, kids making the memories, yeah, that's what it's about. It's something that uh, it's once in a lifetime for select. Select a few group of kids.
It is, it it's a cute little story that shows how small the world is. Um our local representative Jamie Flick. Was part of an ownership group of a, like a minor league baseball team in Australia. And they had partners from all over the world, and one of the partners is obviously in Australia. And he said about a month ago, the guy texted him, and he said, hey, we're we're coming over to the Little League World Series, and Jamie said, oh, that's great, are you bringing your kids? He said, am I bringing them? They they bat second, third and fourth. So um he's the manager, and his kids, it's the first set of triplets we've ever had here uh in the series, and um. It's just neat, and it shows how small the world is, and uh and you just kind of think, and if you ever saw, if if you saw the barehanded tag at the play. But you know, you see something every year at this, at the Little League World Series that you never saw before, and so this year it's triplets.
Okay, we've completed our agenda, so we wanna thank, oh, I'm sorry, a public comment. Oh, yes, we have any from, anyone from the audience? Okay, none from the audience, we have anybody on the line?
I do.
Okay.
I'm a sad.
Okay.
Congratulations, Lorraine. We realize our relationships with others will always have challenges along disagreements, and sometimes. They are broken, because we are people and we are all imperfect. People complain of imperfect people, churches, as the old quip goes, come and join us, you'll fit right in. At the heart, county is more unique than normal. I believe our leadership relies, we all must answer to God for our actions and inaction in this life. Our day of reckoning to Almighty God. Think as long as our leaders display humility, forgiveness, general love to their fellow. Especially coworkers, like Chris Lake, this. Well, our county will continue to be. All relationships are difficult. Flying, not hold the guilt accountable, but to handle each situation as God will have us deal with others' challenges. But always in. Thank you for all you do and for making Lycoming County, especially. Do all you are able to to keep things out of courses.
Okay, thank you. All right, anybody else? Okay, Pennsylvania team plays tonight, seven o'clock, and wish all teams well. Thank you for attending the meeting, the next meeting will be on Thursday, August one second, twenty twenty four. Thank you.